Kathy, if you would do rope call, please.
Councilmember Zerking?
Here.
Councilmember Masters?
Excuse us, but he'll be here a little bit.
Councilmember Cramlett?
Yeah.
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Here.
Councilmember Haight?
Here.
Here. First item is amendments to the agenda. The agenda will be amended. We will hold an emergency executive session tonight in reference to ordinance 192.660. Okay?
It's ORS.
ORS. So...
I'm going to have to say 2A.
2A regarding employment of public officials, employees, and agents. Okay? And... I guess that's it. So with that, we will go on to the council interview of candidates for city administrator. I'm going to have Tiffany Pruitt ask the questions of the candidates over the phone. So at this time, I will pass that to her. You need another microphone by there.
Hello, is this Mr. Watson?
Yes, it's him.
Okay, my name's Tiffany Pruitt. This is the City of Cascade Locks calling to do a city administrator interview.
Yes, sorry I can't be in person, I wish someone was available.
Oh, that's quite all right. Okay, so I'm going to be asking the questions. And then at the end, I will ask if you have any questions that you would like to ask us.
Okay, my question, who am I interviewing here?
Okay, we have Mayor George Fisher here.
Okay.
Councilmember Don Haight, Councilmember Kevin Benson, Councilmember Tom Cramlett, Councilmember Eva Zerking, and I myself am Councilmember Tiffany Pruitt.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. First question. How would you differentiate the responsibilities of a city manager and a city administrator?
Well, they're obviously very similar, out of the same responsibilities. But ultimately, it comes down to the city administrator is the... They give the ultimate recommendation to the city council, and the city council has the final decision on whether a particular issue is the city administrator. And that's all the research, similar to a city manager. But ultimately, the city council would implement a project or they took the recommendation of the city administrator or decided to go in another direction. That's the way I view it. Ultimately, they're both very similar in that they have similar responsibilities. I'm going to be showing you these are always a little complicated.
Yeah, and you're fading in and out as well, so...
Okay.
Was that good enough for the conversation?
Yeah.
Okay, question two. How would you grade yourself on your people skills based on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the highest grade?
Well, I have been, you know, when I'm going through this process, I asked my employees as well as other coworkers what my how I am as a manager or that people person. And everyone considers me to be very approachable. I always have an open door. I'm willing to talk and work on any project with anyone. So I would consider myself probably up in the eight, nine, 10 range of a people person. I very much like to engage the community, the council, staff, become involved with the whole community, so...
Okay. Question three, why did you select the career of city administrator? And what do you feel are your best assets to serve as our city's administrator?
Well, it's kind of a family tradition, actually. My grandfather and father are both city managers, city administrators at different times. And so I've always grown up in the city management field. And I've always appreciated the process and understand the role of a city manager in good times and bad times for the community. So I've always felt that I kind of had a natural draw to the field. So that's why I chose the field. And I also enjoy it. I enjoy being able to work on small projects, big projects, that make a community better. And you get to see, you know, happiness from a lonely couple or a child because you built them a playground. And there's a certain satisfaction that goes along with public administration that I've always appreciated. So my best attributes, I feel I have a good listener, I'm a good communicator with council and staff. I feel like I possess some leadership skill, what it takes to be a city administrator. And I also have the research and the patience that goes along with having the, I guess, put together a project or a program or whatever it takes. And some of these programs take a little while to come to fruition. And I've always said I can appreciate the public process and understand that everybody's going to have their contributions heard, so...
Okay.
And then to expand on any of that, I'd be more than happy.
If you feel you need to, otherwise, well, go on.
Okay.
If you are facing an overall budget deficit for the city, how would you address the problem? Please give a brief description on how you would solve the budget deficit? And what kind of timeline do you think it would take to correct the problem?
Well, I think more individual to the organization. I think I would have to start with the role and responsibilities of the organization. Looking at it from a first-hand view of what services do we provide to the community at the level? How do we provide those services? And why do we provide those services? And others' questions relate to the budget in some sort of fashion. So whether maybe we can collaborate with the county or Hood River or Stevenson on some services? Or maybe we can collaborate with, or maybe we can just use outsourced with the county or Stevenson or something like that. So I think there's lots of options for, I guess, controlling the budget and the deficit. I think it's certainly unique to each city. So I'd have to get in there and talk with staff, talk with the city council and what their observations are, talk with the community, really get an idea of what the desires are from the staff, from that community and city council level, and then approach it further. As far as the timeline, I think, you know, six to nine months. And then a full budget process to kind of get an idea of what our revenues would be. Would be a good estimate. So I don't think it's a quick process because you've got, I mean, there's a lot of services that the community provides, so...
Okay. What motivates you and how do you motivate others?
Success motivates me. I like to make sure a project gets done to the standards that the city council sets up. I think it's like a fun public piece trying to make sure whatever process or program that you're putting in place fits in line with those city council goals of the community's vision. So that sort of gets putting that puzzle together is, you know, you find you have those little successes and those little touchdowns to motivate you and keep you going through the whole process, so... And then it's not motivating other individuals. I like to put a lot of, a lot of the delegate, a lot of the responsibility to my staff and give them the benefit of the doubt that they're going to do a good job and meet the goals of the city council. Also, you know, I find that when you put that sort of responsibility in their hands, usually they run with it. So obviously, there can be exceptions. We have to deal with those individuals on a case-by-case basis. My observation is if you give them the opportunity to be creative and innovative, they'll run with it, so...
Okay, thank you. Describe a situation in which you needed to solicit the cooperation of others in order for a project to proceed, but you had no authority over the persons involved. How did you go about gaining cooperation?
Well, one of the big projects I have at the city is, at the City of Cascade is managing our community events center. And it was kind of an interrupting process of how it all came to be. Initially, we thought it'd just be a place for meetings. Well, it kind of was nice enough to turn into a place for weddings and different kinds of events. So we had to develop a facility use program along with a rate structure. Kind of met in line with the city council's vision of what it was going to be, a kind of free, cheap place for people to use. So I think explaining the situation to the city council on what sort of resources we're involved with maintaining that facility and what sort of expectations they may have may be a little different than the expectations of the users of the facility. So just educating them on those particular issues and making sure that they understood them was complicated at times. But I think just keeping people informed through the whole process was key to being successful. The last thing anybody wants in any project is to kind of hear about something last minute and then they'll just throw the good name and everything kind of blows up and you have to change course. So I think just communication is the key. And I think that I need the collaboration if anybody understands anybody's interests.
Thank you. When dealing with budget issues, how do you go about analyzing difficult issues and come to decisions?
Well, I kind of alluded to it earlier. I think you have to do a thorough analysis of a full review of all the programs and work with the city council to identify which of those services you do want to provide. And at what level you want to provide those services, that can be very different as well. I think you also have to take into account what programs may or may not provide revenue to the organization. Because if you cut out a program that actually makes revenue, you just cut it back to square one. And you'll have to cut something out. So if they're actually making revenue to, you know, give reason enough for the position, there's no more point to cutting out position. And then also, maybe there's ways to collaborate with different entities at the counter, I guess, of the force. So I think you have to really be creative, especially in the economy, bestial age, to figure out how you can share resources and identify new revenue streams. So I think that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. How might your firm or bosses or colleagues describe you?
I would say would describe you as a very approachable individual, very easygoing, but professional and respectful. I have no problem kind of jumping in and helping out where I need to. I think just a few weeks ago, in the middle of the night, at Civic Center in Cascade, so I jumped out there with a lawnmower and got it done because I was looking bad. So I think everyone appreciates my willingness to kind of jump in and help out where I'm needed. As well, with the city council, I was always a go-to guy with different issues with the community and the council. And everybody had kind of a unique problem. So I'm very familiar with working with city councils and the community on a weekly, weekly basis, so... I think that's the way I would be described in that I'm a go-getter, I'm self-motivator. I think I bring a lot of energy to whatever environment I'm in. And I think it's usually received pretty well. So I think I have a very, an ability to put people on ease, which I think a lot of people appreciate.
Okay. And what can you do to help Cascade Locks become the most streamlined, efficient city it can be?
Well, I think you need to start with the services and programs and identify which ones are of the priorities. Work with the community, work with the city council to put those in place. And then you've got to identify the resources and forecast out those resources to the best of our ability. And then from there, you take the necessary steps to, whether it's cutting programs or staff or whatever the case may be, to make it efficient in providing the services that are expected of the community and the city council. And then I think it just takes a lot of hard work and, you know, a lot of tough decisions. And some of those decisions may not go in line with whatever it thinks. But I'm certainly an individual who's willing to make those tough decisions if it comes down to it, so...
And I think the last question we're going to ask is, what role does the council have in the operations of the city?
Well, in the city administrative public government, I think they have a role in approving policy and approving programs. And then it's the responsibility of staff to ensure that those policies and programs are being implemented with the vision that the city council intended. I certainly, you know, wouldn't expect the city council to grab a shovel and be out digging ditches or anything like that. So I think, you know, it's probably unique to every organization. If council wants to be heavily involved, you kind of work with them and keep them informed in what you're working on and what projects are happening. Not to the point where it doesn't go against the efficiencies of the organization. I think if that, if it gets to that level, there needs to be a discussion. But yeah, I think it's appropriate for, you know, the council to make sure that their goals are being met to the point where it's not inefficient for the staff to get their job done, so...
Okay. And then, do you have any questions for us?
Well, what is your vision of a city administrator? And how would you describe...
George?
All right, my name's George Fisher, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. I'm the mayor. And I guess my vision of what a city administrator is, is someone who's capable of coming in and taking care of the situation of running the city. And then with that in mind is the being able to administrate over the different departments, which is sewer, water, streets, city life. And basically be able to handle those abilities at the same time, being able to handle or being able to direct a question into the right department or into the right area. If it needed to be, if it needed to go to the League of Organized Cities, if it needed to go to our lawyer, if it needed to go just to the appropriate person, depending on what the situation might be. We have several different needs in the city like every other city. I mean, we have sewer issues, we have water issues, we have street issues. We have the everyday going-on business issues that every city deals with. And so I guess, you know, it's not always a cut-and-dried scenario, you know. We're looking for a city manager that has the ability to grasp a hold of every situation and try to do the very best that they can do in that situation. You know, assist the council, you know, in procedure. Assist the council in the way things should be ran. My opinion is, is that our council really wants to have a good city administrator because we really want the city to become well-known, well-liked, and, you know... You want to be held, we want to be held in a high esteem throughout the state.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's kind of what my goal is as far as a mayor, to have a city administrator. You know, we're trying to do the right thing, you know. That's the bottom line for all of us. We all sit on the council and we all believe that we're here to try to make things better for the community in the long run, you know. And so we want to try to find the person who's right for that job. And I appreciate your time.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll let one of the council members ask a question of you. Or you can ask a question of them if you wish. Thank you.
Any other questions you might have?
Well, maybe going back to the last question you asked me. What is your vision of the city council's role in the administration, the operations? Oh, yeah. Yeah, I have it wrong. Sorry. It's a little difficult over the phone.
It is very difficult. Okay, Kevin Benson's going to answer that.
Yeah, I'm Kevin Benson, the councilman. I see the city administrator's role as just someone who is certain that it adheres to the policy that's established by the council. That's, I think, I think different councils are going to expect different things from different administrators. But, you know, in Cascade Locks, the administrator works directly for the council. And I think he needs to make sure that the policy and the way things are run coincide with each other.
Okay. Yeah, I would agree. I think it makes absolutely sense. That's the way the public government is set up, so...
Okay, we have time for one more question if you have it.
I think that's it. I think I got my questions answered.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your time and we appreciate the awkward interview. It's awkward all around, but I appreciate that you took out the time to do this with us today.
Thank you, Kim.
Yeah, and I would say I'm a much more charming person, so hopefully you'll take that into account.
Actually, can I ask a quick question? I didn't sit on your application. Are you married?
Oh, I don't know. Can you answer, can you answer my question? Is that okay by any chance?
Okay, never mind.
George shouldn't have a question. I retract the question.
George is a naughty boy.
All right, so I rephrase my question. Are you willing to run a jackhammer all day long?
A jackhammer all day long? Oh, man. I suppose I got the proper training.
All right.
Run a jackhammer, that's true.
I guess somebody will get in touch with you in the next year or so. Yeah.
Do you have any timeline? Is there any timeline in the next month or next week?
We'll probably get in touch with you probably tomorrow. Definitely by the first of next week because we have the final interview set up for the following Saturday, so...
Okay.
So we'll get in touch with you within the next couple of days.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, bye.
Sorry, but that was as far as we could get.
Sorry, I didn't know you couldn't ask that question.
No, because that's like a discrimination question, that's all.
You could have said you were proposing or something.
But that's okay. Then he answered it appropriately.
Okay, now, Mr. Berg?
Okay, so now we are on to John Berg. Of, where is he from? Antioch, Illinois.
It's after dinner.
Hello?
Hello, is this Mr. Berg?
Yes, it's him.
This is Tiffany Pruitt with the City of Cascade Locks calling to do the interview over the phone. We appreciate you taking the time to do this tonight.
Sure, no problem.
With me here tonight is Mayor George Fisher, City Councilmember Don Haight, City Councilmember Eva Zerking, City Councilmember Lance Masters, City Councilmember Tom Cramlett, and City Councilmember Kevin Benson, and myself, Tiffany Pruitt. And I will be asking you the questions tonight. And at the end, I will ask you if you have any questions for us.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Question number one, how would you differentiate the responsibilities of a city manager and a city administrator?
Well, actually, they're fairly similar in a lot of ways. I've done both. You know, of course, the city manager has the power and authority to hire and fire people. When you have a city administrator, it's always that the village board is in charge of hiring and firing people. And the administrator is trying to do the day-to-day details of all the work that needs to be done. And, you know, so in a lot of ways, it's very similar, but that's one of the main differences.
Okay. Question two, how would you grade yourself on your people's skills based on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the highest grade?
It's hard for me to give you a number. I'll explain that briefly and then I'll give you a number. I've always been known for very good customer service. I've been called Magic Rip. You know, people come on in and can be screaming and swearing at me. And by the time they leave, even if I say no to them, at least we're shaking hands and smiling. Because I take the time to explain things to people and explain why or when I can't do what they want me to do. And, you know, that's part of the reason I got into this business because I know people like to help them out. And so, you know, nobody's a 10, but I guess I'd say I'm a 9.
Okay. So can you further elaborate on that, why you did select the career for city administration and what you feel your best assets are to serve as our city's administrator?
Well, I started in public works, believe it or not, to get my foot in the door as a garbage man. And I did public works for six years. So I did the folk, the trenches, and the management. And so some of my best abilities are, as I said, the customer service, I'm really good to people. I'm very much a main number of people over the years. When some very unhappy people came in, including, for instance, my village manager at Winnetka something done. And so, I bring those kind of, I'm a quick study. I just enjoy the public service. Been in about 30 years and, you know, those are some of the reasons.
Okay. Question, the next question, if you're facing an overall budget deficit for the city, how would you address the problem? Please give a brief description on how you would solve the budget deficit and what kind of timeline you think it would take to correct the problem.
Okay. Everybody has had budget problems in recent years, but even before that, at the Village of Lombard, we had a lot of money for a while and then things started going south because they passed certain laws that may date, like for instance, the police and fire pension used to be that when the person who got on the pension died, the spouse would get 50% of her pension for the rest of her life. They changed the law 100%, and what happened was, that made it very difficult for us to meet our finances. And so, we had to go through our budget very carefully. And we cut out any and all of our essential things. Now, I consider training an extremely important thing for people, but we cut all our training budget. We cut whatever we could to still have enough material to innovate for the manpower, do the work right, and to provide the services we had suggested. And then also, we literally had to go to a referendum to get more spending power. I did that, they did that at Lombard, but I also had to do that at City Manager John Schultz in Missouri. So, you try to identify new sources of revenue. You've got to definitely look at your fee structure and everything, change that if needed. And I'll tell you, in Missouri, it was kind of difficult because you couldn't raise anything without a referendum, not one penny. So, for instance, when I had garbage problems, it was costing way more than all of a sudden it used to because of rental expenses, they closed the county rental, I did go to a referendum. And it was maybe a little sneaky, whatever I'm going to say, is we held a referendum and argued, hoping that the old board would turn out and then we kicked people out and we won by 12 votes. We were liquid. So, those are some of the kinds of things you would have to do. And they may, ultimately, they have to lay people off and stuff like that, but I hate them that. And I honestly have never done that, have not had to do it.
Okay. And what motivates you and how do you motivate others?
I like to do a good job. I work real hard. And, you know, I like recognition and I think that everyone does. And so, that's the way I work with people, very closely. I always try to be respectful of them and friendly with them. And, you know, I encourage them when I catch them doing something good, which they do a lot of times. And if they do something wrong, I don't beat them up, you know, too much. You know, I've had to get tons of discipline over the years. But that's my last thing that I want to do. I want to work with employees and they give you some really great results when you give them that respect and give them the recognition that they came up with this idea and saved us this much money, for instance.
Okay. Describe a situation in which you needed to solicit the cooperation of others in order for a project to proceed, but you had no authority over the persons involved. How did you go about gaining cooperation?
Okay, no authority over, well, hmm, I can't think. That's a good question. When I was assistant to the manager at Winnetka, I was top level management, but because the department heads were, you know, really high-level people, they, he would try to deal directly with them and give them the direct orders. He might tell me sometimes to go tell them to do something or whatever. But there were many projects that I had to do and I couldn't really tell them what to do. I had to get their cooperation. And one of them was, for instance, I had to totally rewrite all the job descriptions and personnel managers and stuff like that. And they weren't too keen on helping out a lot, but, you know, I did a lot of it myself, but I did need their help and support. And that's an example of one thing where I really didn't have control over them, but I got it done.
And how did you gain their cooperation?
Just being good to them, nice to them, just the way I treat anybody else with respect and then coming to them and saying, "Hey, come on, we want to get this done." Keep coming to them and saying, "Hey, this is due, you know, next week, that's due tomorrow," you know. And, you know, they respect me. They liked me a lot and so, they would ultimately do what they were needing to do.
Okay. When dealing with budget issues, how do you go about analyzing difficult issues and come to decisions?
You know what, it's really a give and take with the board council, whatever, you know, I've had both, board council, different names. They sit there and they try to, they work with me and evaluate whether they really want, you know, within the budget means. And, you know, it's a collaborative effort and we sit there and we just try to talk it out and see, you know, what is the most important, what is the most important priority? What can we cut? What can we keep? And we go at it that way. And, you know, I obviously make recommendations, you know. Like, for instance, we've had enough money in the budget to buy a new boat. We have a rake, paddock rake, and we had a rake there. And we needed a police patrol boat and we had all the money saved up for it, but it was a hard budget time. And we looked at that boat and we said, "Just because we have to replace it doesn't mean we will." And we actually held it off for a couple of years and we were still, we still were able to get a pretty good price on the new boat, so that's some of the ways you do it.
Okay. How might your former bosses or colleagues describe you?
They would describe me as kind of as I have described me, willing to stay as late as I have to, whatever it takes to get the job done. Hard worker, loyal, trustworthy. You know, when I was at Lombard, Assistant Director of Public Works, I mean, I can't tell you how many times, I'm not trying to brag, but can't tell you how many times that my employees praised me for doing something the right way, my superintendents, my supervisors. You know, at Winnetka, I was a real hard worker. I got huge raises at Winnetka and at Lombard, just huge raises all the time because I'd worked so hard and, you know, worked with people. And, you know, that's my preferred mode. I don't like to beat people over head. I want to work with them.
Okay. What can you do to help Cascade Locks become the most streamlined, efficient city it can be?
What can I do to do that? It takes working with all the employees and getting their ideas and input and trying to come up with a better way of doing things. You're never going to find the best way to do everything, okay? Because there's always a better idea somewhere. But when you involve the employees, they really love it. I mean, I'll give you an example. We had this one employee, we had a safety committee, of course, at Lombard. And he was on the safety committee and he tried to make excuses all the time for accidents and injuries and stuff like that. And we're supposed to sit there and look at him without thinking of the person or whatever and just say, "It's unavoidable." And you would be stunned at some of the things that they, he and some others thought were unavoidable. And so, but as time went on, I kept working with the crew and trying to get them to be more, you know, be more caring about safety. And all of a sudden, this guy became a real high performer on the safety committee and started making recommendations and writing things down and, you know. So, it really helped, that synergistic effect with the employees buying in and working on it. It was really cool. And we did quite well on accidents and injuries from that point on.
Okay. What role does the council have in the operations of the city?
Sometimes, it just depends, you know. I'll say my preferred style is that I think I'm supposed to know what I'm doing, so I like to try to, you know, run it, you know, with the day-to-day operations and stuff like that with the employees. But sometimes there are trustees in both the city manager form, city administrator form, that want to be more hands-on, so, you know, I go with the flow. I'm not going to, you know, say, "Nope, I don't want to do your way, no, no, no." But if there are some, you know, if there are some orders that go against the policy of the whole board, no, I can't do that. And I've had to say no before. And I say, "Go to the committee, ask them, you know, what do you want me to do?" But where's possible, I'll just try to cooperate with a trustee or councilman.
Okay. Do you want to keep going? Okay. Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask us?
Not for right now. I, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about the position and, as I said, I've been through your town before at the pretty out there. And so, you know, that's pretty much it, I guess. I just would like to stress the fact that I am a real hard worker again and I'm definitely looking for a job, so I appreciate your call.
I appreciate you doing this. This is a very awkward, awkward situation, but somebody will be contacting you within the next, either tomorrow or Monday, because we do have the final interviews the following Saturday, so somebody will be getting in touch with you.
Thank you for.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Talking to us.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Bye. What do you do?
Number three.
Well, we have to wait. We're not scheduled until 6 for that one.
Good, we can go take a break for five minutes.
Yeah, potty break.
Number three.
Quick, five minutes.
Number three. Order, and Tiffany, if you would dial the next person.
Okay, and our next person is going to be Harry A. Staven of Alaska. Uh, yes, is this Mr. Staven?
Yes, this is Harry.
Okay, this is Tiffany Pruitt with the City of Cascade Locks for the city administrator interview. With me tonight is Mayor George Fisher and councilmembers Eva Zerfing, Lance Masters, Tom Cramlett, Kevin Benson, Don Haight, and myself, Tiffany Pruitt.
Well, good afternoon or evening to everyone.
Same to you.
Good evening.
We're just going to go right into questions. We appreciate you joining us for this.
Okay, I'm going to be, I'll be just closing the door here.
Okay. Let us know when you're ready.
Yep.
Okay. How would you differentiate the responsibilities of a city manager and a city administrator?
Well, that is a legal question primarily, or a charter question. And in a layman's term, you can have a strong mayor or a weak mayor form. And so, you have a strong mayor form and administrator reports to the mayor and the mayor then reports to the council. The opposite would be on a council manager form and that would be where the manager reports to everybody equally on the council. So, that's primarily the difference. But the day-to-day activities, the administrator or the manager takes care of that, the policy and is 100% vested on the council, no matter which form you have. And it is, I think, a team, team approach for everybody to work to the best interest of the citizens.
Okay, thank you. How would you grade yourself on your people's skills based on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest grade?
Well, if I can put the 10 in there, well, you might. I think that the people's skills come into two forms. Number one, how you treat people and that is famous respect. I think that everyone who comes in contact with the city government needs to be treated with respect and they're our customers. And I have about 20 years of private sector customer service and another 15 years of public sector customer service experience. And I take customer service very seriously. So, I think that our task as public servants is to make sure that the person that we are dealing with has a full understanding that we will take care of the problem. It might not be today, but we will say that sometime in the future, we will get back to them. And that is my personal promise, that there will be a closure on every issue that comes across my desk. The other thing is people's skills, the manager needs to work with many levels of city staff as well as elected officials. And again, respect is a primary factor in there, that we are equal. We're customer service people and we work as a team to be very efficient. We work with taxpayers' money and so, we need to figure out what is the most effective way to keep the best service out there. And we do it by supporting each other. I think it's very important that we communicate openly, we're good listeners, and we need to be asking always the question, "Am I doing what I'm supposed to be doing?" Quite often, the feedback loop is the one that does not get closure. And I constantly try to ask myself that question, "Am I on the right track? Is this the way council wants this community to go forward?" And it is a constant pulling of more data to find out that we are on the right track.
Okay, thank you. Why did you select the career of city administration and what do you feel are your best assets to serve as our city's administrator?
Public service. After 20 years of working with primarily cities, counties, and states as a supplier, I was already familiar with many of the communities throughout the states. And it was a natural progression. I had pretty much reached everything that needed to be reached and the new sector was another hurdle or another challenge. I am a very challenged-oriented person. I think that every opportunity, whether it be in Cascade Locks or a larger city like Richmond, Washington, where my family is, we still have lots of challenges, daily challenges. And so, when I made the decision back in 1980- new sector was another hurdle or another challenge. Um, I am a very challenged oriented, uh, person, uh, um, I, I think that every, um, uh, opportunity, um, whether it be in Cascade Locks or a larger city like Richmond, Washington, where my family is, um, we still have lots of, um, challenges, daily challenges, uh, and, uh, so when I made the decision back in nineteen eighty-nine to transition, um, it was something that had been, um, in the works for about six or seven years. And, um, so it didn't come overnight. It wasn't, uh, something that, "Well, maybe I will try it." Uh, but I also made a second, uh, uh, choice. I wanted to, wanted to be serving in small communities where I'm thinking that vigor is always better. I think that there's, um, you need challenges in small communities that do not come around in the larger ones, and when there, when you are in the larger ones, I hate to be just a number. I'd like to be a, um, person who people can identify with face, with name, and, um, and be thought about as the person who can be approached and ask, "Can you solve this problem for me?" So my problem solved.
Okay. Um, if you're facing an overall budget deficit for the city, how would you address the problem? Please give a brief description on how you would solve the budget deficit and what kind of timeline you would think it would take to correct the problem.
Well, uh, let's, uh, let's be totally honest, uh, these are tough times, uh, financially for local governments. I'm in a, uh, a good position here in Saint Mary's, so let's start first about Saint Mary's. I inherited a year ago, um, a budget that was two point three million dollars, all funds, um, the general fund was, uh, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Today, uh, we're inputting a new budget, and, uh, it is, uh, six point four million. Uh, general fund has now escalated to one point three, and, uh, rest of it is, uh, grants and contracts. I, um, could have settled for a status quo and, uh, not be aggressive towards getting new funds, uh, from other funding sources. As an example, um, when the Department of Transportation, um, had a problem, uh, they, they lost, uh, some key employees from the local workforce. We went in there and, and proposed, uh, to work with them on a memorandum of understanding basis. And as a result, we have now, uh, three, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of contracts that will, will happen between now and first week in, uh, August. Um, another one, uh, when, when, we have two tribes over here. In the past, uh, there was very little cooperation with the tribes, but, uh, they, tribes get road money, they get, um, environmental restoration money, they get, uh, um, some workforce training money, and it was not, uh, the city was not benefiting at all from any of them funding source. So now, uh, there is a substantial amount of new capital coming from their Bureau of Indian Affairs contracts and, uh, and, and grants, uh, which, uh, the city now is an equal, uh, partner in. Uh, we're not the lead agency, but, uh, we don't have to be the lead, leader, we can be just a partner. Uh, so, I, I took a very, uh, aggressive approach in enhancing the revenue side. Now, if we can't enhance the revenue side, then, uh, of course, you will try to balance the budget by reducing expenditures. Um, one of the things that, uh, we, I have to face over here was, uh, what do we do with aging infrastructure and, uh, aging, uh, rolling stock? Um, most of our, uh, vehicles, uh, date back to nineteen ninety or beyond. And, uh, we made a very, um, uh, conscious choice of putting money into, um, maintaining our rolling stock rather than just saying, "It's way past its, uh, useful life, let's just get something new." So, um, over here in Alaska, you have to try to be resourceful. Sometimes the best, um, solution really is, uh, a coat hanger, a piece of coat hanger that holds things together. Um, and we have, have to be, uh, very innovative to, uh, get, um, items in here, because, uh, if, if we spend a dollar on, on a purchase, um, the freight will eat up another dollar, so we can't be able to, uh, just spend, uh, we have to be able to maintain. So I am a person who rather maintains and tries to prolong the useful life, uh, rather than just, uh, giving up on, uh, on a piece of equipment. I'll give you an example. Um, we have a fairly large, uh, um, dozer over here, and, uh, today, uh, one of those dozers would cost about a half a million dollars to purchase. Um, it, it had been, uh, sitting idle for three years, and the idea was that, um, no one knew what was wrong with it, uh, and that, uh, it was something that just was way too big and there was no useful, uh, life, uh, left in that piece of machinery. Um, I thought, uh, otherwise, I, I looked at it, the replacement cost is half a million, and if I put in, uh, even fifty thousand dollars, that's only ten percent of what I otherwise would have to spend. We spend less than ten percent of the replacement cost, and today, that piece of equipment is the workhorse for our gravel operation. So, um, looking at it as, as an accountant, looking at it as a, uh, finance, uh, person, look, looking at it as an economist, um, that's what I will bring to the table, uh, when it comes to budgeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what motivates you and how do you motivate others?
Well, I tell you, uh, challenges motivate me, and I think that, uh, most other people will, uh, also, uh, get motivation from challenges. Um, for the first time in, uh, city's history over here, we have a profit sharing plan in place. And, um, this is a brand-new concept, but, uh, when we, when you communicate the benefits in the right way, and, and in, in our case, I have to communicate that this could be a new snow machine come September, or this could be a replacement four-wheeler for you come September. Um, it has been a fantastic motivating factor. Um, our productivity, um, has improved tremendously, and absenteeism, uh, has redu- been reduced to almost, um, non, as a non-factor. We, our main problem is that, uh, when you motivate by dollars, sometimes people become careless about maintaining the machines. So there was a second factor allowed to communicate to them, meaning that if the, um, machine is down, you will not be able to earn your, um, pro- bonus, and neither will anyone else. So you are not just making a disservice to yourself, but to everybody else. And it was that team concept that probably got most of the workers thinking, "I don't want to be the weakest link or the person who breaks the machine." Uh, so hopefully, we're in the, uh, right path. Uh, but, uh, motivating workforce is not really an art, but it's more of a science. Uh, as, what works for one person might not work for the other, so it's not one, one, once, once that fits our solution, but it has to be tailor-made to the needs of each person. And that's what I try to do, is I, I try to get to know each person as an individual and see what is really important to them. Family might be important to, to one, whereas, uh, going fishing would be important to the other. And so, uh, knowing them is the key.
Okay, thank you. Uh, describe a situation in which you needed to solicit the cooperation of others in order for a project to proceed, but you had no authority over the persons involved. How did you go about gaining cooperation?
Well, Cascade Locks, uh, you, uh, contract with the, uh, service department over there in Hoard River County. Uh, we have, uh, state patrol presence over here in Saint Mary's. I also have, uh, a, uh, what's known as a VPSO, um, and that is a state-run, um, program. And then the third layer in, in the police or law enforcement is a village police officer, which is one of my employees. I have full authority on the, uh, village police officer. I have just suggestive authority on the state-run organization and absolutely no authority on, on, over the state patrol. But to get these three layers to work cohesively, uh, is, is, uh, the, the, in, um, state that we want to get to. And I can say that, uh, Saint Mary's, if you take all the communities here in the, um, region, and you ask any of these state patrol officers, is they, is Saint Mary's the best community when it comes to cooperating with the all three different branches, and you will, you have a unanimous, uh, agreement that Saint Mary's is the only one that is working together. And that's basically, um, going back to respecting everybody, who they are and what their mission is. And, uh, and by allowing everyone to work in their own, within their own, um, mission and, and, and their own focus without stepping on each other's toes, that's the key. So for instance, uh, when we have to transport a prisoner from here to a place called Bepel, where the jail, regional jail is, sometimes the transport is done by state patrol, VPSO, VPO, or in cases, I have done some transports myself. We pretty much jump into whoever is available and most logical to do it. We don't want to put the person to transport who just spent a twelve-hour shift on patrol, uh, so the, the responsibility goes to somebody else. We all share in the responsibility, but we also share in the collective, um, goodwill, uh, because, uh, I can say that since the curfew, uh, vehicle curfew ordinance was passed over here, everybody knows that no one should be cruising after midnight, uh, because you will go to jail and your, uh, four-wheeler is going to be confiscated. I think we're the only community here in this region that is known to be tough when it comes to law enforcement.
Wow. Okay. When dealing with budget issues, how do you go about analyzing difficult issues and come to decisions?
Well, uh, it is, uh, a lot of, uh, data gathering, um, and using all the management science tools, um, that, uh, we learned or did not learn, uh, in school. Um, I'm fortunate to have had a broad, uh, numbers-based, uh, background in the undergraduate level, and so, um, options, there are always options around, and, uh, we, we can, we should always try to, uh, uh, strive to improve our, um, our practices. There's an, another area that, uh, needs to be mentioned here, and that's the collective information that you can get from other, um, surrounding communities, uh, state, uh, support organizations, as well as national support organizations. Uh, and a concept called best practices is, uh, is very, uh, much, uh, out there right now, and, uh, it's free information, quite a bit of, of that is available. It's just for us to, uh, to ask the right questions and be open to doing things differently. Um, I am a person who will embrace, uh, change, embrace, uh, new technology, but it has to be appropriate technology. Um, just changing for the sake that it's the latest, probably not, uh, um, in my, uh, fabric of, of, of being a person. I, um, don't want to be the early adopter and pay the price. I want to be, um, I want to allow others to, uh, have the ability to, uh, see if it works or not, and then I will adopt it when it's proven that, uh, this truly is improving, um, our effectiveness and, uh, and efficiency. Um, what, what needs to be, uh, needs to be said, uh, about, uh, number crunching is that it is, again, a team concept. We need to have everybody involved, because the best ideas truly come from the lo- uh, the person who is closest to the action. And, uh, centralized, uh, decision-making, uh, is not something that I, I favor. I, I truly favor more of a team approach and, and focusing and, and empowering everybody to bring in new ideas.
Okay. Um, how might your former bosses or colleagues describe you?
Well, I think that, uh, when you look at, um, who I mostly, uh, uh, think, uh, highly are, they would be folks who were either in the law enforcement or in accounting, um, city clerks, uh, planners. Uh, the folks that, uh, I had, uh, some problems, uh, would have been in the fire department or, uh, because most of the fire departments in small communities are volunteer. I, uh, to contrast, a volunteer fire department and a professional, uh, police department, there is a huge difference in just the way everybody's approaching their task. And, uh, I feel very, uh, much closer, I guess, uh, what should, should say, I feel closer to the professional side, a professionally-run unit, as opposed to a unit that is, uh, based ran or, or, or sustained by, uh, volunteers. I am a, um, person who likes to invest into human capital, uh, training and those type of things, so, so it would be, former bosses probably would say, "He truly cared for his people, and, uh, he took care of them as, as persons," rather than, um, pieces that, uh, can be bossed around.
Okay. What can you do to help Cascade Locks become the most streamlined, efficient city it can be?
Well, you have a lot, a lot of things going for you. One of them is location. Uh, location, 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 uh, the old saying from, uh, from real estate, uh, you're in a very good location, right in between or commute distance to, to, uh, uh, two large, um, uh, cities, Hoard River on one side, Portland Metro on the other side. Um, but I think that, uh, what, uh, you have to be focusing on is how you maintain the values that you have created. If, if, if a small town is the value that you want to maintain, that should be factored into all your growth plans. Um, but you also are, uh, in a very good location for tourism enhancement. You already have a lot of tourism going into that area, but more and more is, is certainly welcome. We, I think that it's fair to say, if we can get a dollar from outside, that enhances the local economy much more than just circulating existing dollars within the community. So, uh, let's not, uh, focus on just numbers of new people coming in, but new dollars coming out, coming into the economy. So I would be working very hard on the tourism, uh, uh, industry. You have already tapped into the, uh, cable TV and internet and, and also, uh, your, uh, electric service. That's very unique, and that's very attractive to me, because, uh, um, it's pretty much a mirror image of Richmond, Washington, where, uh, in nineteen nineties, I- Where in 1990s, I served in the Electric Utility Advisory Board. I served on the Economic Development Advisory Board. And those were the two areas that I, back then, 15 years ago, that were my specialty areas that I bring into communities. Richmond is a much larger community than Cascade Locks, but really, my specialty is and my love is to serve small communities. So I think it's a good fit. I like the area and my roots go real, quite long in there because my father, when he immigrated into this country, first place that he lived was in Hoard River. So it basically is like going back home.
Okay. And our last question, what role does the council have in the operations of the city?
Well, in a strong mayor farm, a mayor is a person that should come to every staff meeting. I, with open hands, welcome that input. I think councils, council members themselves need to be very involved in the advisory board and bringing the ideas and talking to the constituents. You have a lot of committees or advisory boards that serve a very valuable function, your museum board, the Historic Landmark Commission, and those type of things. You are a very unique, small community. And I think that if the council members are very active in the community and you allow the staff members and you actually embrace and encourage the staff members to be active also, that is a sign of a very healthy community. That's one way I gauge how good the community is. I go and ask, when I come to a community and I'm just a person at random, ask what's going on, what's good about the community? And if I get the blank look and say, well, nothing ever happens here, that's probably not a good, a good sign of a community. But from East Menace, a community where I served about 10 years ago, that community, if you asked anyone, what's good about this community, 10 minutes later, you would say, yeah, thank you, I think I know that this is a good community. The people were real proud of that community. I'll give you another community that was very proud also, and that's called Wyoming. Very small community, 500 people, but they understood the importance that every person is an ambassador of that particular community. And the role of the ambassador is to put the best foot forward and put the community in the best light because you never know when, where the next job will come from. And true story, Quokful, when they hired me as economic development person, they didn't know exactly if there was going to be anyone interested in coming to a small community. And one person who stopped just for gas, later on, wrote me and said, I would like to come in there and I might have a job for 20 people. And I'm interested in your community because of the way you treated me at the gas station.
Okay. Well, we've got about like 45 seconds. Do you have anything you'd like to ask us?
Well, the only thing that I have, I have good news. I won't be coming your way. And if you would like to see me formally or informally on Monday, I could be coming down. I'm going to be in the area.
Okay. We will, at this same number or do you have a different phone number?
Yeah, go ahead and call this phone number or Mr. Coulson and email me if you would like to see me on Monday. I will be available at any time. I will be flying in on Saturday, meeting my family, and I'll be in the area for three, four days.
Okay. We will get in touch with you within the next couple of days then. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. Okay, next person is Eric Strahl from Michigan.
It's almost time for him to go to bed.
Okay, 6:30. All right, now.
We're going to get three out of this.
I think it's six. Yeah, total of three.
Make it six today.
Okay, I guess we'll try in a minute.
Someone just said just that when you, when you call, you just.
The only thing I've passed on.
Just let them know. There's going to be about 10 questions and we'll try and see.
The only thing I've passed on.
You did that once, I thought it was really good.
Okay. I just didn't do it on this one.
Right, just, yeah, it's hard to keep it straight, but just to announce the process, I think it's, it's just a good way of introducing.
Did you want to go there?
I liked it because he liked the buildings.
Since we have grown, check that out. I'll go back to this picture. Oh, sorry. We'll just.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Tiffany Pruitt with the City of Cascade Locks, calling for the city administrator phone interview. With me tonight is Mayor George Fisher and Councilors Eva Zerfing, Lance Masters, Tom Cramlett, Kevin Benson, Don Haight, and myself, Tiffany Pruitt. We have a series of questions we'd like to ask you, and then at the end, we'll ask you if you have any questions that you'd like to ask us.
I'm all set to go.
Okay. First question, how would you differentiate the responsibilities of a city manager and a city administrator?
Basically, I think the major difference is the fact that a manager has more independent authority as far as managing the municipality. He can take, or he or she can take more independent action and has more independent control of various things. An administrator is a level below that and basically works through the council as far as certain types of actions that require council approval from an administrator or as a manager wouldn't necessarily need that approval.
Okay. Next question, how would you grade yourself on your people skills based on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest grade?
I would say probably 9. I use a participative management style. I like to get people involved in the decision-making process because I don't claim to have all the right answers to every issue. And I think the more you can get people involved in the process, the overall, the better the decision, and usually the easier it is to implement. I've been in situations where I've come into new positions, new management roles, and found divisions within the community or departments that were disorganized, and I was able to work with people and get things turned around and pointed in the right direction. So I believe I have strong people skills.
Okay. Why did you select the career of city administration and what do you feel are your best assets to serve as our city's administrator?
I had, I had worked in the private sector for a number of years and then through some volunteer work became interested in the municipal side. And so I went back and earned a master's degree in public administration. That's what got me interested. The volunteer work is what got me interested originally and the desire to have an influence in terms of working with communities and improving them and making their overall operation better for the residents living there. As far as my primary strength, I would say I have strong analytical, financial skills. I can take an issue, break it down so it's understandable, come up with a number of options for resolving it, and then make a recommendation as to the best option and be able to support that recommendation. I'm a problem solver, gullible, and I like to know where I'm going and how I'm going to get there. I think it's important to have a set of goals, major goals that you can concentrate on. I think innovation and creativity are important for communities. We need to continue to be looking at ways to either make operations more efficient or save money. I think another strong skill is what I mentioned, my participative management style, and the fact that I'm a consensus builder, a team builder. And another one is just the fact that I'm future-oriented. I tend to look at and make recommendations and decisions that are normally going to benefit the community today, but will benefit the community in the future. So we're not in a situation where we're constantly going back and going over the same problems again and again.
If you are facing an overall budget deficit for the city, how would you address the problem? Please give a brief description on how you would solve the budget deficit and what kind of timeline you think it would take to correct the problem.
Well, obviously, you have to look at your overall budget and you have to work with the council in terms of if they don't exist already, what the primary priorities are. And then you sit down with each of the department heads, each of the operations, and you make some decisions in terms of the amount of dollars that need to be cut to bring the budget into balance. And then you work to make an allocation so much for each department, and you work with the department head to see where those cuts can be made. You also take a look at some of the costs that are maybe not particular to each individual department, such as, you know, insurances, fringe benefits, things like that, and see where you might be able to make some cuts. Excuse me. And at the same time, you, although it's probably a somewhat longer timeframe, you look at where you might be able to supplement that budget as far as particular budgets are concerned with bringing some outside monies in, such as state or federal grant monies or loan monies that could help with projects. As far as a timeline, without having specifics, it's kind of hard to say. I can give you one example of my experience dealing with the particular situation you're talking about. When I started in Menominee, Michigan, I started about a month after the city had, council had adopted a new budget. And they had adopted a budget that was out of balance by about $200,000. And they were just finishing up on a major recreational construction project, and it was a good project, but they just undertook it at the wrong time. They undertook it at the time that the state economy was going into the tank. So I was able to review that budget, work with the council, and we got that budget into balance and came out with a surplus by the end of the fiscal year. That probably took about, you know, four months of real review to do that. We faced those same types of budgetary crunches in the years after that, and I was able to prepare for that, and we made some changes in departmental restructuring. I was able to generate some significant savings for them with their health insurance, and we were able to do a number of things that helped out. And I know when I, about four or five years before I started, the city had a general fund surplus of about $3.6 million. And when I started, that had been spent down to $400,000. And over the course of three years, I was able to get that back up to approximately $830,000.
Okay. Thank you. What motivates you and how do you motivate others?
I, I'm just motivated by the challenge of working in the public sector. I like to accomplish things and that's really what motivates me. As far as motivating others, I think you almost have to look at each individual separately because people are motivated by different things. But I think some of the things you can do, you know, if not just salary and fringe benefits, I think some of the things you can do are, number one, to encourage people to come forward with new ideas and new ways of looking at things. And if they make sense, implement them and give the people credit for coming up with those ideas. You also need to evaluate the skills of the people you're working with, and if they have the skills, you need to give them the authority to run their individual departments as long as you're kept informed of what's going on in those departments. And I think there are a number of things you can do along those lines to motivate people. If you have somebody that's got really good skills and they want to broaden their work experience and take on additional. broaden their, their work experience and, and take on additional workload, you have to be willing to, uh, work with them to accomplish that. And if you've got somebody that's a good worker but just, uh, needs additional training, you have to see what you can do as, as far as, as providing that type of training so that they become an even, even better employee. I think a lot of it deals with, um, you know, just being willing to listen to people, see what they have to say and, uh, work with them, uh, on ideas that, that make sense or if they've got particular problems, how you resolve those issues.
Okay. Uh, describe a situation in which you needed to solicit the cooperation of others in order for a project to proceed, but you had no authority over the persons involved. How did you go about gaining cooperation?
Um, I, there was one situation where we, uh, constructed an addition to an industrial park and, uh, the land that we purchased was outside the city limits. It was in a township. And in order for the project to go forward, we had to be able to, uh, annex that property and bring it into the city. And the, the township was not very happy about that happening, even though they really had no use for, uh, and it, for that land and it hadn't made no effort to develop it. So we had a, uh, a major issue that we had to resolve early on and, uh, we had consi- uh, continual long-term discussions with the township and eventually were able to, uh, work out an agreement where, um, we provided a, a certain smaller percentage of, of the tax revenue that would be generated from that, uh, property as it was developed in exchange for being able to bring it, bring it into the city. There was another situation where, um, we had a, uh, major all-season resort that was located about, uh, one and a half miles from the city. We were the closest community and they, uh, wanted to expand but needed to, uh, connect to our, uh, sanitary sewer system in order to be able to do that. And, uh, of course, they had the feeling that, uh, you know, we're approaching it from the standpoint that they should pay as little as possible to, uh, to make that happen and, and really didn't have a good understanding of, uh, how, uh, you know, municipal sewer rates and charges were developed. So we had some really, uh, interesting discussions, but ultimately through an educational process, we were able to, uh, develop an agreement that, uh, that worked for both parties and still, uh, allowed for the, uh, long-term financial stability of the, uh, the wastewater treatment system. And it also enabled them to, uh, do a considerable amount of expansion which, uh, brought additional new jobs to the area.
Okay. When dealing with budget issues, how do you go about analyzing difficult issues and come to decisions?
I think first of all, you, you take the issue and, and break it down so it's understandable. And then you have to, um, come up with, uh, a broader way of potential solutions, as many solutions as you can, uh, as many types of trade-offs as you can for dealing with the issue. Um, and you involve all the, um, the individuals or the, uh, you know, particular organizations that might be, um, involved in that budget or impacted by it. And you, uh, analyze those, those specific options and, and work with those people to come up with the one that, uh, that will do the best job. And, uh, once you've done that, it's a matter of, uh, implementing it and, uh, you need to, once it's implemented, you need to follow up and, and track it over time to see that it's really performing the way, uh, people feel it should. Um, as far as, um, you know, the budget as a whole, like I said, you, you have to build a, a team environment with your department head so that when you're, um, dealing with cutbacks, everybody shares equally to some degree and you try and spread it across the board so, um, you don't have one department that's necessarily sacrificing much more than the others. And you have to, um, you know, particularly in larger organizations, take that down below the department head level and, and get everybody in, in the department thinking about it because a lot of times there are, are people that do particular jobs below the department head level and since they do them every day and, and have a really good understanding of those jobs, they can see some ways where, uh, you might be able to save some money.
Okay, thank you. Um, how might your former bosses or colleagues describe you?
Well, I think basically, um, they would mention those strengths that I mentioned earlier. Um, I'm, uh, calm, even tempered. I'm not one of these people that, uh, that bangs the table. Um, based on the, um, types of, uh, issues that municipalities have to deal with nowadays, I'm not necessarily one that's going to make a, a snap decision. I'll, I'll take a look at the issue and, and come up with what I think is the best answer. Um, I'd say I expect a lot from the people that work for the city. Uh, I've always given a hundred and ten percent and I s- e- expect other people working for the city to do the same. Um, I don't see the administrator's job necessarily as, as a popularity contest. You have to do what's, what's best for the community. Um, they would also say I'm, I'm ethical, um, and, uh, I don't fight for politics although I'm aware of the political landscape.
Okay. Now, what can you do to help Cascade Locks become the most streamlined, efficient city it can be?
Well, I think it's, it's somewhat hard to say at this point because unless you actually, uh, worked in the organization for a while, uh, it's hard to say what types of specific recommendations you might make. But, um, as I said earlier, in, in, uh, Menominee, I was able to streamline things and, and get things running more efficiently and save money. Um, I've done the same thing with, uh, major projects in other communities, uh, where they've, uh, faced some financial issues. So I think with, uh, the background and, and the broad experience I have, I would be able to, uh, accomplish that in Cascade Locks. It's just a matter of, um, when you first start to, uh, talk to as many people as possible to get a feeling for, um, how the organization operates, to work with the council to make sure there's a good set of, uh, primary goals and objectives that the council wants to accomplish. And then you start, uh, looking at, at the organization and the operations, uh, closely and working with department heads to see where you can make, uh, adjustments and changes that are either going to make, uh, operations more efficient or, or save some money.
Okay, and our final question is, well, what role does the council have in the operations of the city?
Uh, basically, the council has a primary responsibility for, um, setting overall projects and priorities for the city. Um, the administrator advises them, but ultimately they have, uh, the decision-making pow- uh, power as far as that's concerned. I think another major function of the, of the, uh, council, having been elected by the residents of the community, um, a lot of times, um, you know, a resident will, will mention something to, um, a member of the council that needs attention and, uh, from there it's transferred to the administration. So I think that's a, uh, a critical role that people on the council play.
Okay, uh, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I guess one of the questions I would have is, is what do you see as, as some of the, um, major issues or projects that somebody coming into that position will have to deal with right off the bat? I know you mentioned, uh, you know, looking at, at financial issues and, and streamlining the operation, but is there anything else beyond that?
I, I think the mayor's going to answer those questions.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um, anyway, the, the things that I see that are, that are major issues coming up for the city is, um, is we have to deal with, um, our fire and EMS department, um, that there's been several changes due to budget and due to people resigning. And so now we've left with a hole that we have to deal with and we have to deal with it as quickly as possible and, and, and we're currently working on that, but that might be something that, that you might be involved in. Um, we have, um, capital improvements that, that are going to have to be done. Um, we have a very old antiquated, um, water system that, uh, we need to get a new million-gallon storage tank and we need to have a new distribution system put in line for that. We have upgrades to our existing sewage facility that need to be done to meet the EQ requirements. Uh, we're currently under an MOA with the EQ. So, um, we're at least under that umbrella to continue to work forward to try to make these changes without, uh, receiving any fines from the state currently. Um, and then we have, like mentioned, we have several things that we went through on our budget, uh, that, you know, it's, again, I understand until you've actually been here and seen it, that's, that's hard for you to actually get a grasp on it, but, um, you know, we, we went through it this year and we'll, we have a balanced budget and, uh, but there's still a lot of debts that, that need to be addressed and, and we've addressed them, but there's still things that, uh, that you're going to be involved with in that way. We have, um, some good opportunities for our community. Uh, I don't know if you've heard of Nestle Water Corporation, uh, that they're thinking about possibly coming here and, and opening a, a bottled water plant. Uh, we also have the possibility, even though it's been a long time coming, that, uh, we might get an Indian casino. But, uh, that's still, but that's something that's out there for right now. And so, uh, we're looking for any kind of future development, uh, you know, to, to create more revenue for the city and more work for the people here in, in the community. So, you know, that's what we're looking for and, and we're looking to do that in a way to make Cascade Locks, uh, which is part of our, part of our deal is that we're the heart of the Columbia Gorge and, and, uh, and we take great pride in what we're trying to do. We're trying to make things better for the community. So that's what you would have to look forward to.
Okay, well, I, I will mention, I've, I've gotten extensive background as far as, um, the water and sewer projects are concerned and, and, uh, financing, uh, throughout my career. I, I started out as a, uh, assistant city manager and in that community, we were, we were doing a, uh, 36 million dollar water and sewer project that extended over three years. Um, in Menominee, um, we were successful in getting the, uh, State Department of Transportation to come in and, uh, upgrade the, uh, state highway that ran through the city. And as part of that, we, uh, replaced the municipal water and sewer systems that, uh, were in that highway. And, uh, I put together, uh, two projects. One was a 1.6 million dollar project and the other was a 3.6 million dollar project to replace those systems. Um, and that was also over a, a three-year construction period. Um, and I've also been successful in, in dealing with economic development, industrial, commercial and, uh, I've worked in several areas where tourism was a major part of the economy. So I, I think that would, that would be a help to Cascade Locks.
Okay, well, we, we appreciate your time. Um, we'll give you a call within the next couple of days, um, because we do have the final interview, um, a week from Saturday. So we'll be getting in touch with you within the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciated having the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Bye.
Boy, I think we cut it off at the right spot because, boy, that just wasn't, we're cut. Okay, so the next person is going to be David Maynard from Wisconsin. Does he? No, that they need to quiet down their questions. Okay. Okay. No.
So this is number five.
This is number five. Hello? Oh, is this Mr. Maynard?
Yes, hello.
This is Tiffany Pruitt with the City of Cascade Locks for the city administrator interview by phone. Uh, with me here, I have Mayor George Fisher and city councillors Eva Zerfing, Lance Masters, Tom Cramlett, Kevin Benson, Don Haight and myself, Tiffany Pruitt. Um, we have a series of questions for you. We have about a half an hour's time to do these questions and then at the end, um, if we have time, we'll ask you if you have any questions.
All righty.
Okay. First question, how would you differentiate the responsibilities of a city manager and a city administrator?
Uh, city manager generally has more authority than our city administrator does, uh, although in many respects they're very similar. Oregon has, uh, a little bit, uh, less difference than many of the states, but, uh, no differences. The council, uh, you have the executive officer, uh, in an administrator position. The administrator is simply carrying out the will of the council.
Okay. Uh, how would you grade yourself on your people's skills based on a scale of one to 10, 10 being the highest grade?
Obviously, we'd all like to take with 10s. Uh, I'd say probably about a nine. Uh, generally speaking, uh, with very good luck, we're, we're in with employees. Um, most of my communities, I would say the employees were very happy with me, either as an administrator or a manager.
Okay.
Are you looking for the public as well?
Uh, uh, yes.
Uh, in most of my communities, uh, I've been characterized as probably the most popular town or city manager or administrator that they've had.
Okay. Um, why did you select the career of city administration and what do you feel are your best assets to serve as our city's administrator?
Oh, two-point question. Um, I started out, uh, looking at- I changed my focus to city planning, that's my master's degree, and in the course of it, I was looking at trying to deal with, be able to deal with the kinds of problems that small communities have. And I very quickly became aware that the planner may point a direction to the future in conjunction with the community that's meaningful, but the manager or the administrator working directly with the council is the person who actually can implement it. And I'm more of a hands-on person attempting to delay the trail, so to speak, in conjunction with the council and the public, but then going out and actually doing it is what I enjoy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, second question is what?
And what do you feel are your best assets to serve as our city's administrator?
Cascade Locks is obviously at the casino and Nestle's water bottling plant, has potential projects along with what's going on with the Port of Cascade Locks, with their several projects. Excuse me. The ability to understand the big picture as well as to be able to handle the small details that allow you to actually get from here to there without breaking the bank or alienating the public. Those are probably the best skills. The people skills, working with the staff. The staff as a whole is what implements the projects in general, not just the administrator. And a very developing teamwork approach within the staff.
Okay. If you are facing an overall budget deficit for the city, how would you address the problem? Please give a brief description on how you would solve the budget deficit and what kind of timeline you think it would take to correct the problem.
I've probably done as much or more research on Cascade Locks and as per my current position financially and otherwise than probably most of the candidates. In light of what I do know at this point, I would be lying to you if I said anything other than I don't know enough yet. What I do know is you've got enough of a deficit that is causing substantial problems. It requires very tight, careful fiscal management during the current year. I know you've just adopted your budget, so it's not like the new administrator, it's going to get a lot of room to be able to maneuver and dealing with that issue. The first year is going to be a lot of learning, a lot of working with the public and the council and the staff, trying to isolate, identify the things that can make a difference. My impression is that you've gone a long way in that direction, but I suspect there's still a lot to be done. And again, as I said, I think I'd be lying if I claimed that I actually knew the answer to that question. After a lifetime career of doing this, every community is different, every situation is different, and what is possible in one community is not necessarily possible in the next. I just have to be there and know and understand a great deal more before I even attempted to claim to have that kind of an understanding.
Okay. Now, what motivates you and how do you motivate others?
I'm a very self-motivated person. I was very tired of finding ways to do things better, improve things from what they are, improve the public's view of local government, establish working relationships. I'm a problem solver. I look at a certain group of things that the administrator has to do that are basically mundane, routine things that simply need to be done on a day-to-day basis, but at the same time, trying to set aside or carve out a little bit of time each day, as much as possible, to focus on things that are either known problems or identifying what has been overlooked that may help to solve a lot of the things that are already identified as problems and come up with an overall strategy for how to do that. I don't so much focus on a single issue or challenge. I look at the array of issues and challenges and attempt to chart a path or a course that will actually resolve one completely impossible, but at the same time helping to solve a second or a third or laying the groundwork to do that. At 60 years of age, I'm kind of tired of recreating the wheel of the highway each time. I'd rather work smart than work hard. Mind you, I still work hard, but there's a difference between working hard for the right reasons and working hard because you're beating your head against a brick wall.
Okay. Describe a situation, I'm sorry, let's go back to that. Did you describe how you motivate others?
How do I motivate others? Basically, I lead by example. People are generally motivated if they see somebody else out front who's actually motivated, who appreciates them, who values their time and effort, works with them, not just orders them around or tries to force them to do things that they either cannot or might just...
Okay. Next question, describe a situation in which you needed to solicit the cooperation of others in order for a project to proceed, but you had no authority over the persons involved. How did you go about gaining cooperation?
I'm sorry to laugh at that. I had a recent, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I had a recent position in my last private community, CSR Community Association. It was a community of about 5,000 people. When I arrived there, it was the most demoralizing, contentious, totally unable to work together community you ever saw. In a private community, you have to build public consensus within the community. The board has a certain amount of power, but there's an annual meeting and at that annual meeting, you either get your, whatever needs to be approved that's significant, or it doesn't happen. The first year that I was there, I spent a good deal of time working with the different people that were involved, dealing with the public in general as far as calming their fears. They thought their community was falling apart. And at the end of approximately eight months there, we had the annual meeting and I achieved the first and only unanimous vote at a community association annual meeting. And it was to go ahead with a community redevelopment project that was absolutely essential to keeping that community alive. Their public infrastructure or building infrastructure was in total disarray. The roads were disaster. Most of their amenities were severe disrepair, if not totally destroyed. They have not supported the association as a governing body for the prior two years due to fees, which is what they get in a private community as opposed to taxes and utility fees. By any rate, they were severely in arrears. Most people had refused to pay for at least a year, if not two years. I was able to get the highest collection rate in the history of the place that same year.
Okay. When dealing with budget issues, how do you go about analyzing difficult issues and come to decisions?
I do my hard research, data research first. Then I try to sit down with staff, second, make sure that I understand everything that we have for information, knowledge, experience within the staff level, which is usually the depth of the experience in the community. Then if it's something that is going to be similar in other communities, there's going to be similar situations, I generally go outside briefly to find out what other communities have done to try to resolve the same issue or challenge. And then come back, sit down with the city council and or committee that's involved, arrive at a working hypothesis of how to address it. And then I try with the blessing of the council to go out to the public and try to build a support for that approach to doing it. When I come to the council or committee, I generally have two, if not three alternatives, but I am very clear in why I think one is better than the other or others.
Okay. How might your former bosses or colleagues describe you?
Some would describe me extremely well. Some would be anything but. In my last job in Princeton, I walked into a mess, not disclosed, the interview time. I was the administrative clerk and treasurer. There was an undisclosed, unfunded, very severe budget deficit, not disclosed to the public. Order me as the new treasurer, I was denied access to the books and accounting for six When a large percentage of checks bounced despite a insufficient balance showing on the accounts, I requested an audit. The deputy clerk treasurer, who was the only other person in the office, immediately declared war on me, claiming that I was criticizing her. Obviously, if the books aren't right, she does the books. She probably drew a proper conclusion, although I was careful not to do the criticizing. I simply asked for an audit to identify what was wrong. I'm sure you're all aware, I was terminated at the end of 90 days. It was the day after the council meeting at which I notified the council that as they had requested, the audit was completed and was ready for public presentation at the next council meeting. Following day I was terminated. The audit report never has seen the light of day up here. Council, city council had hired me in public, similar to what I understand the process during using, and had very carefully specified that I was to operate in a very publicly transparent manner and everything was to be out in the open. When I attempted to do so, I was finished quickly. Most communities have a vocal minority. If you talk to the minority portion of the community, you will hear bad things. If you talk to the majority that supported whatever was done when I was there, you would hear good things. Staff depend on which side of the fence they're on. The ones who did their jobs professionally without taking political sides would, I believe, would substantially be supportive and say very good things. The ones who took sides and were on the opposing side to what was being done probably would have nothing good to say. My job as the administrator or manager, whether the staff members choose to be politically supportive of what the council wants done, my job is to see to what they do to their jobs.
Okay, thank you. What can you do to help Cascade Locks become the most streamlined, efficient city it can be?
Again, without having greater knowledge than I do, I would be anything but honest if I were to suggest I know the answer to that question. What I would be doing though is maintaining a very fiscally conservative approach to it. My approach has always been, you go into the community, you take a period of time to learn. You don't come in with preconceived notions. You don't come in with a belief that you know about. If you do that, you've cut your own throat and you've damaged your community.
Okay. And the last question, what role does the council have in the operations of the city?
The hesitation is, I'm aware of some of the debates that took place in prior council meetings on the subject. Generally speaking, the city council is a board that sets policy, approves budgets and expenditures above a certain level, and provide overall direction to the community, the administrator and the staff. I'm aware that in Cascade Locks, the council is a little bit more involved than normal. I don't see that as a particular problem. I can work with that, but I would hope for, as the council, if I were to be selected for the position, I would hope that the council would arrive at a point where they would feel comfortable, that I know my job, I'm capable of doing it, and would give me some room to actually do my job. More so than getting directly involved to the degree that the council appears to have been in recent times.
Okay.
If I may, real quick on a little ahead schedule. I can work with the council either way. I'm a very strong believer in the idea that councils work best when they openly debate issues that are on the agenda and when the council votes, they vote their conscience. Some will agree with item A, but not item B. Others will be just the opposite and there'll be some who basically don't have a strong opinion either way. But the council, given the facts are there, if they vote their conscience and it's an open vote in that manner and debate in that manner, I believe communities function relatively well, regardless of how strong opinions might be expressed or reside within different council members. What I have gone over a lifetime in this profession to understand is that the idea of a consensus council, and I'm not talking about set agenda, I'm talking about consensus where everybody agrees in private and then they come out and vote the same in public regardless of whether they agree or not. I've learned over time, that does not work.
Would you guys mind if I ask him to clarify his part of his last answer?
No, I think as long as you're sticking with the same question.
Okay. Councilman Benson, I had a question about your last answer. You said that you had done some research and you felt that this particular council was more involved than what was normal. Could you give me a specific example of what you're talking about in that answer?
The administrator, once the council establishes policy, the administrator normally implements the policy. I read through the last two or three council... The administrator, once the council establishes policy, the administrator normally implements the policy. Um, I read through the last, uh, two or three, um, council meeting minutes and I got the very strong impression that the council is more involved in a, uh, specific issue. Uh, I honestly don't remember a specific issue, it's an overall impression.
Okay. Um, and do you have any questions for us? We have about four more minutes left.
What are you, as a council, actually looking for in an administrator?
Does anybody else want to ask it or we go ahead?
No, I think, I think George's...
Okay, this is a mayor. Hello. Um, what we're looking for in an administrator is, 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 uh, we feel that we're a unique, uh, city in the Columbia River Gorge and that, uh, you know, we've, we've got a lot of natural resources. We have, um, other things that are possibly coming into the community. There's still the possibility of a casino. There's the possibility of Nestle waters coming in. Um, so there's, there's room for growth and expansion, but at this time, we have, we have a community that, uh, we have lots of infrastructure things that need to be taken care of. And again, we're like every other community in the United States, we're on a limited budget and we have to work with those, those things. We're looking for this city administrator to be able to administrate over all of our projects that are going on and that they have to be able to handle and administrate over the city business of, of running city streets, city sewer, water, electricity, TV and cable, um, all those items. We need someone who's a strong leader, who can, who can do those items, as well as, because we are a small community, you're also going to be involved in things that probably, you haven't been involved with a bigger community because, uh, we have to diversify, we have to have somebody who's diversified to be able to handle, you know, you might have to, to write, um, a, a letter or email or an ordinance violation for the grass being too tall, you know, um, you know, you might have to, uh, go out to the front window and answer the front window when, uh, the other girls are at lunch or something. I mean, um, we're a small community, so we have to, we expect our city administrator to be able to be a little more diversified than what you would be if you were in a, in a large community, if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand. Could I respond quick to that or are you out of time?
No, you still have a little bit.
You still have a couple of minutes.
Okay. Um, I doubt you will find anyone more diversified, your term for it, than I am. Um, I've worked the front window, uh, at a time when the only other person in the office had vacation coming up and, uh, circumstances dictated that it happened to be the week when bills were due. Um, there is no time when you learn more and understand better when it goes on the front window than on the week when the bills are due. And I'm talking about the water bills, the electric bills, uh, whatnot, so people are coming in to pay their bills. You're dealing with the public as well as balancing everything else that goes on in the office. I've driven snowplows, I, I'm a heavy grader operator, uh, the old mechanical type, um, I've built sort of, sort of computers. Uh, mind you, I'm not suggesting that I'm up to date by any means, I was in the nineteen, early nineteen nineties. Those of you who are familiar will remember Windows Three. Long time ago. The understanding is there, uh, that goes with it, but the technical ability is not there at this point. Um, I've done engineering administration, uh, I've done project management, I've done all aspects of projects from initial grant writing, funding, acquisition, uh, bonding, uh, you name it, all of the different steps through. In Arizona, I was the, I was, uh, given special invitation to attend all of the three portions of insurance training for the state, the municipal insurance port. Um, normally municipal managers attend one of those. I was invited to attend all three and I was the only manager invited. Um, I've done investment work privately as well as publicly. Um, I have some special training in insurances. Um, I have gone to great lengths to obtain the direct training knowledge and experience in handling almost anything you do in Cascade Locks. I'm not a trained firefighter, I'm not a legally trained police officer, I have served as a police commissioner, uh, as an ancillary job. Um, and the other thing I've not done is, is, uh, actually being the assessor. Uh, I've assisted the assessor, uh, at a crunch time in the process, but I have not actually been the assessor.
Okay, David, thank you. Uh, we have to go on to the next interview, but we appreciate...
I understand.
...your, your time and talking with us.
We'll contact you in the next couple of days. The final interview will be a week from this Saturday, so we'll be getting in touch with you either tomorrow or on Monday.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure talking with you and I... I'm sorry?
Nothing, go ahead.
It's been a pleasure talking with you and I would sure appreciate the chance to actually sit down with you, uh, look at Cascade Locks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Bye. Okay, our last candidate is, um...
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey Knopssinger of, um...
Wyoming.
Where?
Wyoming.
Wyoming, yes. I guess I'll try, try back in a few minutes. Yeah. Try back in a few minutes.
Busy?
Um, I want to voice mail. So, maybe we should just take a five, ten minute break. Come on, back in.
Yeah, let's, uh...
You might leave a message. Well, I don't want this phone number to go over. Even Stella couldn't call us, so...
Let's adjourn for five minutes.
Take a break, right?
Take a break. Yeah, sorry. I was thinking about adjourn. If he doesn't answer...
Yeah, well, no. Okay, so I don't...
Let's get that executive session.
Okay, yeah, we do have an executive session, but are we going to be debating...
At the bottom of your agenda again.
Right.
So, I don't know if you want to do that before we do the interview.
Yeah, I'll do it prior.
After, before the executive session, okay. Okay. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna try one more.
Yeah, I wonder what shows up on his caller ID when we're trying to call him through that. Answering.
Well, but you like...
We could try calling from the other phone and then...
It's all the same.
It should be a three seven four number.
Right. It's like oh one.
Your caller has been forwarded to an automatic voice message system, three zero seven six nine nine zero zero one three is not available. At the tone, please record your message. When you have finished recording, hang up or press one for more options. To leave a callback number, press five.
Mr. Knopssinger, this is Tiffany Perret with the City of Cascade Locks, calling to do a city administrator phone interview. I'm sorry we missed you. And if you have any questions, you're welcome to give us a call back at some other time, five four one three seven four eight four eight four. Let's do my phone number. Thank you. Okay, so...
Okay. So, at that time, uh, at this time, we will conclude the, uh, interviews for the candidates for the city administrator. At this time, is there anyone from the public that wish to comment? No? There's no comments from the general public. Uh, at this time, um, we will, uh, discuss, or actually, we will go into executive session per ORS, ORS number one nine two point six six O. Question?
Um, could we, uh, put it, um, into the agenda for, um, between executive session and interim possibility of action items after executive session?
Yes.
And describe those as...
Okay.
Um, related to the process of hiring a city administrator.
Okay.
And did you have one or is that with that?
Yeah.
Possible action on interim city administrator position.
Okay. Okay. So, um, ordinance number one nine two point six six O, parentheses two, A, parentheses, regarding employment of public officers, employees and agents. Uh, we will also discuss the possible action of an interim, uh, city administrator and discuss interview process for CA interviews. At this time, we will...
After the...
After the executive session. So, at this time, we will go into executive session. Okay?
We need to give ready time to...
Yeah.
And then, gentlemen, I think that's it.
I have to declare a declaration of emergency meeting. Okay, you ready? Okay, the meeting's back to order. At this point, I am going to declare a declaration of emergency for, uh, hiring the city attorney. So...
Do you want to explain why?
And the reason why that we are, uh, hiring the city attorney now is that, uh, today we have received, uh, a letter from Richard Carson that, uh, he has, uh, done working for the City of Cascade Locks. So, uh, we need to seek legal advice and we need to act on the contract that's, uh, outstanding so that we can, uh, gain legal advice to go through, uh, his leaving and then us also possibly needing to, uh, hire an interim city administrator.
Or permanent.
Or permanent. So, at this time, we will have discussion.
I move to approve the, uh, contract hiring, um, I'm not sure how to pronounce the first name.
Wait, do we need, first, do we need to make him the temporary interim city administrator and sign the contract? Because we have to have somebody who can sign the contract.
Oh, Mary can sign it.
Kenny?
Okay, all right, sorry. All right.
To approve the contract with Sosnowski and Cleveland PC for city attorney services.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, accept the contract. Uh, all those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, excuse me, discussion? Seeing none? Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries? So, tomorrow I will sign the contract and notify her that, uh, the contract has been approved by the council. Okay? Uh, next item that was on the agenda was whether or not, uh, the council feels that, uh, they need to appoint a, a temporary interim city administrator on that. Any discussion? Lance?
I don't think we do.
Okay. Um, my opinion is, uh, I think that already that we have the signing authority between myself and Tiffany, that I think on a temporary basis that, uh, I think we can fulfill everything that's needed, uh, at this time. So, I, I, not saying that I'm not willing, but for right now, I'm, unless there's a problem that something needs to be come up, and if that does come up, then I'll call for an emergency meeting, but right now I think I'd be fine with that as well. I'd just as soon not have to do it again. Don?
I, I, and I said it before, I think we can get a permanent here, hopefully as fast as we can get a temporary here. I think the timeline would be very little difference.
Correct. And I will, just so you know, I will make myself available here as much as Kathy and the staff needs me to be here, so, uh, I'll be here at her call, just so you know.
I like that idea.
Pardon me?
I like that idea.
Okay.
Okay, so are we going to explain that we're going to make, what are we going to do about...
We're going to get legal advice.
...a process tonight?
We're going to get legal advice.
Oh, we... Oh, we, we're, we went through the process of hiring the, uh, new city attorney so that we can get the city attorney here to give us legal advice on, uh, hiring the, uh, new city administrator and/or a temporary s- city administrator. So, we will be in contact with them tomorrow to get that advice from them. So, is there any other discussion? Yes, Lance?
Did you address, are, we're gonna, who's gonna call the candidates? We're gonna...
We're gonna discuss that with the attorney.
We'll discuss that with the attorney and then once the attorney gives us, uh, an advisement, then, then Kathy or myself and Kathy will make sure that those notices go out and the phone calls and notices go out.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, after we talk to the attorney. Kevin?
I, I would move to authorize the mayor or Kathy to implement the advice of the city attorney and the notification of the candidates.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to give, uh, myself the power and Kathy, did you say as well? And Kathy, to, the power to, uh, once we get the information from the lawyer and the lawyer's advice, to go ahead and notify the candidates. All those in favor?
Well, discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
Uh...
Go ahead, Lance.
Um, I would just like the rest of the council to, to be notified as part of that.
As well afterwards, sure.
Uh...
Stand the procedure.
So, if, if that's, between you and Kathy, if that's understood, I don't have a problem.
Sure. I have no problem with that. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourn!
Thank you, Betty, for staying.
Did we vote to stay past nine o'clock?